Frank Farrey.
Here.
Marshall Goff.
Here.
Lilly Junkin.
Here.
Gary Key.
Here.
Jim Maltajo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Marino. Welcome back. Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
This evening, we have our prayer and our pledge by Council Number Four.
Before we pray, I would like to have this council welcome back Vice Mayor Marino. We missed you. We're glad you're back, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we pray for this council that it will do what is right and just for the city it represents. We pray for all those who have been affected in any way by this terrible pandemic. We pray for all city employees and their families that they stay safe and well and will not be, but not attract any disease or illness. All of this, we ask in your name, amen.
Amen.
Federal allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now have a presentation by our auditor's office.
Hi, how's everyone doing this evening? My name is Skylar. I'm from the West Virginia State Auditor's Office on behalf of JB McCuskey. And I wanted to come up here and give you guys a brief update. I think last July, in conjunction with your finance department here, we launched Project Mountaineer, which is a public-facing transparency portal sponsored by our office that is 100% free to cities and counties in West Virginia. And while working with Clarksburg, it's been a great partnership. Tiffany has been a wonderful partner. And we bring you this transparency portal so that folks in the city government, for you folks to manage your money and to be efficient and to be able to track your trends in real time through your funds and through your different kinds of accounts, as well as giving the citizens of Clarksburg and of Harrison County a window into the finances to help you folks understand how that tax money is being spent with that transparency angle. How this all really started, our office has been tasked with doing audits by the legislature without giving us any really more resources to do the audits. And so how this is sort of rolling out is the angle of trying to get audits done more efficiently and more streamlined. And so we're doing that to have our auditors in Charleston be able to look at the books in real time to give folks a window into that, into these funds with that transparency angle. And we're hoping to be able to get audits done more seamlessly and more efficiently. And this is a big part of that. So what I want to do is give a quick run-through, a quick tutorial of the platform to show you folks how things kind of work and how you can find your way around in the website. So we're starting here with the report that you folks have published. That's an annual expense and revenue report. And you'll see over here, Tiffany has done a nice job of bringing in some saved views. And these sort of give a brief encapsulation of what it is you're going to be looking at. So a saved view is basically a way to get to a certain part of the platform without having to dive too far into it. Let's say you go in and you look at revenues and you look at certain, some certain revenues by code that you didn't know how you got there, you weren't sure, you weren't sure where to go back. You have these views here so you can have a quick jump to to get back into the platform for where you want to go. So we're going to stick to right here. And we're going to drill down into, actually, we're going to go into expenses real quick. And then here, you now have a breakdown of the different ways that we can break down these expenses. If you scroll over here, we go down a little bit. We go to filters, and here's your breakdown tab. And we have three different ways that we can break down this information. We can break down by fund, by department, or by expense type. And for the sake of this example, I want to stick to expense type. And you can see here the different kinds of expenses that we have. This is a summary table underneath so that you can have a way to, more of a typical accounting format, to break down this information. And then up here, we have our rollups. And then we have our different breakdowns here. I know transportation and sidewalks and stuff is a, something that's usually talked about. So we'll go ahead and break down into that. And that should be, where would that be, Tiffany? We've got a lot of breakouts here. Here, we can do it an easier way. Here's a different way to filter right here. We go to filter, and we go to, shit, no, to... Streets of Transportation. And then if we uncheck this, we uncheck all of these boxes, and then we can go down here to Streets and Highways. And then you'll see in the background here, the graph automatically changes for those different expenses. And so now we're looking at everything related to streets and highways for the city of Clarksburg. Here is your budget, what was allocated to the budget for this past year. And then, year over, and then, well, for here for 2021, we're breaking it out by fiscal year. So this is what we've expensed so far by expense type for 2021, set against the annual budget. Looks like the folks are doing pretty well so far. And then here's your more typical format for viewing that. Here's your original budget, and then here are the actual set against that budget for your different types here. And there's your sidewalk program. So far, you haven't spent anything with the actuals there. And so that's a quick, that's a quick tutorial on how to sort of navigate the website. You can go up here, and you can drill down further by using the legend. And that'll help you drill down a little bit more, or you can always just click on the color, and that will take you to certain elements of your budget in that report. If you're feeling froggy and you want to put it on Facebook, you can put it on Facebook and talk about it. Something that we like our partners to do is, for our finance teams, if council ever wants a login, we can get everyone for council a login, so you can come in and access this information too, so you're not driving them nuts getting reports from them. And you can download these images and these spreadsheets, so you can have them at your disposal at your will, so you can make decisions when you need to. It's a very great way to have decentralized information so that everyone can stay on the same page. And we find that when we have this data broken out into a big picture, we can say, hey, we're spending too much here. Or, you know, we have this extra revenue here to expend to use for this, for this line item. And when everyone is on the same page and able to view the same data, it drives decision-making and efficiency. And that's really what we want too, as well as streamlining audits. And so that's really the walkthrough that I wanted to give you for the platform. One more thing I wanted to talk about real quick is something that we're going to be doing for your ARP, American Relief, or your American Rescue money that the Biden administration is putting forth. And we're going to be giving you guys a new story. And what a story is, is basically a way to tie in financial data with the reports that I just showed you earlier. And it's a way to tie in a narrative with financial information so that you can literally tell a story. And so what our office is planning to do is give everyone, all the municipalities, cities and counties in the state of West Virginia, you'll be getting that money from the federal or government for your COVID relief. And we're going to take that money, and you're going to report it to our office through this transparency story, through this OpenGov story. And so I'll be, I'll personally be building all of these for all of our cities and counties in West Virginia so that we can see how that money is being spent. Once we get all of the information that we need from all the different cities and counties, we're going to aggregate that information to be able to give to the legislature, give back to the federal government and say, hey, this was too much money, or this wasn't enough money, or, you know, be able to track those expenditures in real time so that we can obviously, you know, reduce the fraud element, so we can make sure that people are spending the money the way that they properly need to, as well as, like I said, have those aggregates and to be able to take all this information, roll it up, and be able to tell a story with it, like, hey, you know, we needed this for this and not for that. And, you know, when we have all the information in front of us, it makes it much easier to make decisions. And so Audra McCuskey is going to be requiring all cities and counties to report their COVID relief funds expenditures to our office. And with that information, we'll make it public-facing on the transparency portal, and that'll be for every city and county in West Virginia. But we love, we love Clarksburg. Obviously, Audra McCuskey is from Clarksburg. His heart is here. And you guys have been a great pilot, and you've been a great partner, and we really appreciate your help with all of this. So I'm willing to take any questions anyone, anyone may have. And I think Tiffany had some stuff that she wanted to talk about with some updates that the, that the city had. So Tiffany, I'll go ahead and kick it over to you if you had anything that you wanted to, you know, get you back to the portal here and get you to your stories.
Okay, so all of this means nothing, us loading up this data if you all can't utilize it. So basically, what I'm trying to do is implore all you all, if you don't have, if you have no idea what you're looking at here, you have no idea how to use this, to please reach out to the finance department. I'm willing to help you. I'm willing to set up any kind of views you want to see. If you want to see, for example, Harry asked to see the departmental spending in the city manager's department to see what the difference are, differences were from this year to past years. So I set up a story with a spreadsheet. And as you can see, city manager's office spending is down significantly, 58% actually, from prior years. You can actually take, I can make these stories, or I can just make this, sorry, the bar graph. And with this, you can go from this story into the bar graph, and you can see specifically where he's spending less money, where his department's spending less money. I can do this with any department. I can do this with any fund, well, any budgeted fund, I'm sorry. I can do this with anything that we've loaded into OpenGov. So if you're looking for something specifically, let us help you use this tool to get to it. I guess that's really all I've got. Does anybody have any questions for the auditor's office or for the finance department?
You want?
No.
I just want to commend the finance department on the work you've done with this. And especially Tiffany and Kim, you've done an excellent job.
Thank you.
Absolutely. It's great. It's great to see all the work that's been done to make our finances more transparent. And we want to be of service, so if anyone has any questions about this, Project Mountaineer, any other deployments that we may have, what goes into this, be sure to, be sure to reach out to me. I'll have my card. I'll drop my card up front with these folks. And feel free to get it, give the auditor's office a call anytime. We're here to help and move forward. So thank you. Appreciate you guys having me. Thank you.
Approve both the minutes of the regular session of March 4, 2021.
Show moved. Second.
The objections and minutes are agreed to.
Petitions, communications, and public hearings. Brad Morse, 503 Stanley Avenue, wishes to address counsel concerning code enforcement.
I am going to try to be very general with this. I've been in contact with Mr. Falk, so he knows some of the more details, and I don't want to get into the weeds. But what I, what I want to say is that, in my opinion, and I think, you know, my main issue is, I just want to let you guys know, I'm a concerned citizen, okay? I do a lot of business here. My heart is coming from a place of, I have self-interest because I have a lot of business placed here, obviously. But the other part is, I want Clarksburg to do well and to function properly. And, you know, there's my opinion on that, but then there's things that aren't my opinion. And the issue that I've been having with code enforcement is that it feels like to me that if they want you to do something, they'll, they'll issue a violation or a citation, and then they'll find something in the code that backs it up instead of the other way around. Like, I have gotten several citations that the coding doesn't match. And when I bring it up, they don't tell me, like, well, we see where, we don't argue about code. We sit arguing about what I have to do and what I'm supposed to do, and if I'm just going to do it anyways, then why am I bothering arguing with them? And I'm trying to argue, well, it's because it's not in the code. You can't just cite me for whatever you want to cite me for. Like, there are levels to things as well that I don't think is fundamentally part of the culture of code enforcement. Whereas, hey, if I'm been a fairly compliant citizen, and you want to issue me a notice of violation, that's a lot different than issuing a citation. I would think, like, we would build up in levels with use of force, not jump to the end where I am under the gun. And then what happens is, is I get issued a citation, or I get issued a notice of violation, and I call in, and basically, when I call in to ask, hey, I don't see where the problem is, I don't... It's like, hey, it's not a big deal. As long as you do it, then you don't have to worry about it. And to me, that's like someone that has, I mean, this is obviously over the top, but it's like if someone has you at gunpoint, it's like, hey, don't worry about it, just do your thing. I am under duress of law to do it. That's not me working with the city. That's the city with the full use of force behind, and the full use to find me or whatever, to get me to do something they want to do. And I mean, the, I do make mistakes. There are things that, you know, obviously, I'm running a lot. I do a lot of rental property around here. I do a lot of real estate stuff. There are things that I'm going to get wrong. I understand that. I never had these problems when Jim Lanesa was here. Well, I dealt pretty much with Jim Lanesa, and I thought a lot about that. Me and Jim disagreed on a lot of things. But the main thread was, and I know he's not here anymore, and Jim was, in my opinion, was a very good man. I liked dealing with Jim, even though we had our issues. But Jim was competent. If I called Jim and said, hey, I don't see where it's at in the code, he would email me back, it's this line, this line, this line. Then I would call him and say, hey, I don't think it works under this. And I won some of those battles, where he would go, okay, I see what you're saying. It doesn't apply to code. Can you just do it anyways because it probably needs to get done? And I'd say, yeah, sure, Jim, I'll tell you what. I'll send you an email as soon as it's done. It'll probably be 60 days because it's not a top priority for me, and I'm not compelled to do it, but I will get it done. I just need time because I'm trying to run a business here, and I don't want the city coming down on me. Anybody that wants to talk to me about any of these specific issues, you're more than welcome. I have a lot of things that were done wrong. Like I said, I've made mistakes too. But I mean, I just got cited. I had a tenant, one of my tenants called me on Tuesday and asked me if I could check on another tenant, which isn't normal, and this tenant's an elderly tenant. So I went and checked on him. They had died in my place. I found the body. It wasn't fun. I've never had that happen before. And the place was a wreck. The guy was probably depressed. He was a smart guy. He stopped in my office. He paid his rent every month. So this isn't a reclusive person. All the other tenants liked him. His place was disgusting on the inside. I get cited on Monday morning. I didn't get a call from anybody. No one from the city called me. I had to call 911 and get him dragged out of there. What had happened is, the police took pictures of the inside because it could have been a crime scene, which it wasn't. They gave that to code enforcement. Code enforcement, without even going and checking on the site, cites me. I didn't have a certificate of occupancy, and it expired, so that was totally legit, and I'm working with them to get that done. I didn't try to avoid them. I just didn't know it had expired. They don't send anything to remind you, but the responsibility ultimately is on me. But I got cited for the interior of the property. And in the code that they highlight, under responsibility, he highlights all the stuff that's mine, which is the exterior, and then he doesn't highlight occupants of dwelling unit, rooming unit, housekeeping unit are responsible for keeping in a clean, sanitary, and safe condition the part of the dwelling unit, rooming unit, underprints which they occupy and control. Obviously...
Sir, your five minutes is up.
Okay. Well, let me, I'll wrap it up real quick. That's the part of the code that was relevant here. Instead of them saying, you know what, we can't cite you for that. Can you just get it cleaned up, blah, 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 blah? Like, there's no reason to do that. I'm not responsible for it, and he doesn't, he specifically didn't highlight that. It just feels really aggressive when there's no need. I'm, it's in my self-interest to get it cleaned out, and I got to work with a dead family so that they can get the stuff out in between. I can't just go in and clean things out. Like, there's, there's layers, and it's complex. And I'm just saying that code enforcement, there needs to be a culture change over there of, hey, let's work together. Not everything has to be the use of force, and be competent. If you're going to cite someone, make sure it's in the code. And if they call you about it, get back to them on what the code is. So we're arguing about code. We're not arguing like, well, we just want you to do it. That's all I got to say about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
City managers reported update.
The manager's office, under the American Rescue Plan of 2021, the city of Clarksburg will receive, will receive $6.3 million to use towards responding to or mitigating the COVID-19 public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, and nonprofits, covering lost revenue to the pandemic relative to revenues collected in the most recent fiscal year, and making necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. The Department of Treasury is expected to release further guidance on the utilization of these funds in the upcoming weeks. I recommend that council have a work session in the coming months to start exploring ideas how to utilize these funds. The city of Clarksburg, along with the Harrison County Chamber of Commerce and the Harrison County Economic Development Corporation, will host a small business summit at the Robinson Grand on Wednesday, April 21st at 9:00 a.m. Please RSVP for the event, and it'll be open to any Clarksburg business. From the police department, we would like to welcome our newest K-9 officer, Asta. She is a 17-month-old German Shepherd, and Patrolman Kane Bender will be our handler. Training will begin in April. The Clarksburg Police Department, along with the Harrison County Sheriff, Robert Matheny, will host Coffee with the Cop at the Robinson Grand on Wednesday, March 24th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. This will be an opportunity for the public to meet with our police and ask questions. Testing for future police officers will be on April 17th and April 29th. Details are on our website. From the fire department, the FBI Weapons of Mass Destruction and Response Team met with our hazmat technicians to train on our newest diagnostic tool for detecting narcotics, explosive, explosives, and hazardous materials. Firefighter Billy Elko has successfully completed his one-year probation, and applications are currently being accepted for the position of firefighter, and the deadline to apply is May 13th. From the finance department, a list of businesses that have failed to obtain a business license with the city have been given to code enforcement and may be cited if they fail to register. The department audit all contractors and rental tax returns. For those that filed a zero, code enforcement will investigate whether the property is vacant. Invoices are being prepared for the current rounds of demolitions. For the city parks, for the third year in a row, the Veterans Memorial Park has been named Harrison County's best park. The RFP for soft drinks for the amphitheater in Splash Zone has been advertised. The first concert at the amphitheater will be April 1st. Please check our website for details. And April 1st is the target date to begin the preparation for opening Splash Zone for the season. From the Robinson Grand Performing Arts Center, the center, along with Vintage Theater Company, will present the first live public event, April Fools, an evening of improv comedy with the Fearless Fools on April 1st. Please visit their website for event tickets and details. Antero Resources presented their $100,000 contribution to the center and as part of that, their overall commitment to $600,000 for projects and ongoing operations. Local and regional dance recitals will take place throughout May and June. Restrictions will apply to the public. Please visit their websites for details. For code enforcement, the department issued 52 building permits for a total project cost of $733,025.62. 23 notice of violations and 13 citations were issued. 14 residential and seven commercial inspections were performed. Animal control responded to 36 calls for service. Five vehicles were tagged for removal, and five illegal signs were removed. For public works, the department installed 147 feet of new sanitary sewer lines. 20 catch basins were cleaned, and two were replaced. Five tons of yard waste were picked up. Crews also demolished 848 Verdun Avenue. Lights in the Hughes Avenue's parking garage are starting to be converted to LEDs, and applications are currently being accepted for the position of labor, and the deadline to apply is April 12th. From the wastewater treatment plant, interviews were conducted for the position of superintendent, and I would like to congratulate Drew Eddy on being the ideal candidate to lead the future operations of the plant. Chad Marsh has been promoted to lab director. Alex Bombardier has been promoted to shift operator. Applications are currently being accepted for the position of plant operator, and the deadline to apply is March 26th. An acceptance receiving station is at 85% complete. That is the end of my report.
Unfinished business. Consideration of second and final reading of public hearing of in ordnance of the city of Clarksburg, providing for the abandonment of unopened, unimproved extensions of 16th Street and Alpha Avenue, 30 feet in width, adjacent and along parcels 65 and 70 on tax map 14, owned by Raymond D. Comer, Barbara J. Comer, and the city of Clarksburg, Cold District, Harrison County, West Virginia, shown in the petition for said abandonment on file in the city clerk's office, providing for findings of fact in connection with said abandonment, and authorizing the execution of the proper quitclaim deeds reserving their firm utility rights of way. Notices regarding the public hearing appeared in the expedited telegram on January 26th and February 1st.
We will now open the public hearing. Anyone who speaks for against may do so at this time. Yes, sir. Please come to the microphone and state your name.
My name is John Angel Lee, and I've spoke to you about this abandonment of 16th Street before. The reason I'm going to go over the grounds for disapproval for abandonment is because not all council was present the last time I did this. Mr. Marino was off with an illness. I have copies of this, if anybody wants a copy or has not seen it themselves. If nobody wants a copy, then I'll read what it says and what I'm asking council to do. Counsel will not approve an abandonment or vacation of any street, alley, or public way under the following conditions. This is only about 16th Street. Nothing to do with Alpha Avenue. Okay, council will not approve, okay. If the street, alley, or public way serves or is expected to serve any public purpose. If any person or property not consenting to such vacation or abandonment is found to suffer special damage. If the vacation or abandonment will landlock or make inaccessible any property where the owners thereof have not consented. That's exactly what your charter, your bylaws say concerning abandonment. It tells you when you cannot do it. If any council member has any question about any of these that they think I don't apply to, now would be your chance to ask me that question. If not, I'm asking council to vote on that according to what they have in their charter. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes, ma'am. Please come to the microphone and state your name.
My name is Barbara Comer. And first of all, I'd like to say we are not unreasonable people. And when we decided to do the abandonment on 16th Street, we didn't think it would be an eight-month odyssey. We are really, we really hadn't planned on doing it until our daughter expressed an interest in having our house when we are finished with it. She said she might take, she might like to add on to the existing house. It was then that we realized more footage was needed because our house covers the footage that is available for, to be used. With the abandonment, she could do it. There's no plans to do anything. This is our daughter's future plans. We did our due diligence and know we are neighbors on the piece of property, that our neighbors on a piece of property are the SRA. We have copies of the deed, the lease agreement, and the tax map. We do not have to have, we have not asked for anything that has not been granted to many of the people this past eight months. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak for or against this particular ordinance? If not, we will close the public hearing.
May I say something, please?
Well, first, we need to have a motion and a second on the floor for discussion. So who wants to make a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, now we can have a discussion, Councilman Malphite.
To the Comer family, will Mr. Angel Lee have access to use that property-
He has access to enough property down there to do anything he wants to do.
Will he have access to this particular property if we grant the abandonment?
If I did. Jim, you know us. We're not unreasonable people. If, this is a moot point. If he would need to cross over our property, that's not an issue. We have no problem with that.
So you're saying that Mr. Angel Lee would have the accessibility to go across this property?
As long as we have not, as long as we have permission to cross through his property to get to ours, not a problem. This is, this is not an issue. At this point, we are landlocked on two sides because of what he has done. We have not an issue with that. This is insane. This whole thing has gotten completely out of proportion. It's insane. We have not a problem. It's just that we are not going to put it on. My parents should not be asked to put it in their deed when they need it to mean that they have lifetime permission and perpetuity to go across our property. That's unreasonable. But we have no problem with we've been neighbors for years. I grew up with their boys. This is insane.
Councilman, do you have anything further?
You know, I've been sitting on this council eight years in June, and I've never come across a situation like this for an abandonment. And I mean, you know, it's, it's it's sad, you know. That's it. That's all I have.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak before we vote? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Call the roll.
Frank Ferrari? Marshall Goff?
No.
Lilly Jenkins?
Yes.
Gary Key?
No.
Jim Malphite?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes. Motion's agreed, too.
New business? Public hearing on proposed budget for fiscal year 2021 and 2022, and notices appeared in the expedited telegram on March 11th and March 18th.
We will now open the public hearing. Anyone who speaks for or against the proposed budget may do so at this time. We will now close the public hearing.
Public hearing on an ordinance of the city of Clarksburg amending Section 5 of the city charter to provide for direct election to the mayor.
Okay. Before I open the public hearing, as I have in past charter amendments, I'm going to explain that this is the time where, in the process, if somebody has an objection to make to this, this would be the time to make that objection. So with that, I will now open the public hearing. Anyone wanting to speak for or against the charter amendment may do so at this time. I will now close the public hearing.
Consideration of first reading of an ordinance of the city of Clarksburg to amend Section 507.05 of the classified ordinances to modify the penalties for the lack of restraint of dogs and cats.
Mr. Mayor, let me drop your disordered some first reading by title.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Consideration of approval of the budget for the fiscal year 2021, 2022, and the amount of $20,588,360 for the general fund, $56,100 for the coal severance tax fund, $269,000 for the police finance program fund, $1,289,513 for the excess property tax levy fund, $1,030,000 for the financial stabilization fund, $6,966,000 for the sales and use tax fund, and $705,300 for the Robinson Grand Performing Arts Center.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Consideration of a resolution of the council, the city of Clarksburg appointing a member to the Clarksburg Visitors Bureau.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for the consideration of a resolution of the council of the city of Clarksburg to appoint Lisa Sutton as a member of the Clarksburg Visitors Bureau.
Do we have a second on that?
Second. Discussion.
Discussion.
This resolution is the second one to the original naming of folks appointed to the new CVB. Who's being replaced? Why are they being replaced? Is there some type of problem? Does this person have the credentials? I mean, I just, you know.
Well, I'd be happy to answer your questions. I'd be happy to answer your questions. First of all, Lisa Sutton was the person that originally was proposed the last time there was a vacancy. But then the council decided to go with a different qualified person as well. Lisa Sutton is in the hotel industry. She is the manager of the Hilton Garden Inn. And so the CVB came to us proposing that we add her to the board. And as to who she's replacing, Brittany Anderson decided to resign due to family responsibilities. And so there's a vacancy, and we feel she's a great candidate.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Do we have, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Consideration of a resolution appointing ballot commissioners fixing precinct boundaries and polling places, and appointing election officials for the general election to be held in the city of Clarksburg on Tuesday, June 1, 2021.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Consideration of a resolution appointing emergency absentee voting commissioners for the general election to be held in the city of Clarksburg on Tuesday, June 1, 2021.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Consideration of a resolution of the city of Clarksburg, West Virginia approving amendment of the rules and regulations of the Fireman Civil Service Commission of the city of Clarksburg, West Virginia.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Consideration of a ward bid for the repair of the new slip located on Winding Way.
Mr. Mayor, I approve, I move that this council approve the emergency ward to repair the Winding Way slip. That the contract be awarded to Rockford Bridge Company in the amount of $165,677, and adding a 15% contingency of $24,851.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Consideration of appointments to the Municipal Building Commission.
Somebody have a motion? And when you make the motion, please state the names.
I'll make a motion to appoint the following to the Municipal Building Commission. Tracy.
Carl.
Carl. Hayden Cotrell, and Brooke Jenkins.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Counselor comments.
Okay, let's start with Councilman Malphite.
Thank you. Mr. Falk, you have any luck making an appointment with the governor? Mr. Falk, I'd like for you to look into the opportunity zone. I think Clarksburg is an opportunity zone, and I believe there's monies out there that are accessible.
Okay.
Next, you know, I have pictures on my phone from last night. I went across the Joyce Street Bridge. There's no lights on the Joyce Street Bridge, and the signs are even unlit to go to Parkersburg or to go to Bridgeport. And, you know, I mean, I understand, and even the new lights, the new structured lights that they put up, it has like six huge halogens on them that raises up about 50 feet that are right around that section of Joyce Street are all out. So I, you know, I think we should, you know, if we're paying $300,000 a month for electric, for lighting to first energy, I mean, I think that, you know, they can do something. Because Joyce Street Bridge is dark and dangerous. Dark and dangerous. I'd like to welcome Councilman Marino back. Ask everybody to continue to keep him in their prayers. You know, he's out in the woods, but he's not over the hurdle yet, so that, yes. And, you know, if you see something, say something, folks. If you see something happening out there, pick up your phone and dial 911. Doesn't matter how insignificant you think it is. You let the police department sort that out. If you see something, say something, please. And everybody, have a nice weekend.
Councilman Ferrari?
Harry, you know, on these demos that the public works is demolishing the structures, it'd be nice if you could maybe send us an email or a list of the ones that they're tearing down so that we can add those to the ones that we know that contractors are tearing down in case we get any questions. And again, the only thing I'd like to say is welcome Jim, Mr. Marino back, and we're glad to have you back, Jimmy. Glad you're doing better. Let's all have, Mayor.
Councilman Goff?
I wanna say how happy I am to see the second canine with the police department. We've gotta battle these drugs somehow, and I think that we're on the right track. Councilman Keith's just as happy as I am to see that. I also wanna welcome back Jimmy. We had a nice conversation, and I took it to heart, and I'm glad to see you back. That's all I-
Councilman Keith?
Thanks to everybody that spoke at the meeting tonight. Just wanna back Marshall up on that, you know. If anybody was at the budget meeting, you know that me and Marshall were pretty adamant about getting that second canine. And I still would like a third one, bud. I'm really happy about the second one, so I'm gonna shut up for a little while. But, you know, as we made clear how important that was, everybody on council got behind us on that. So thank you to everybody for, you know, getting on the same page. Thank you from city manager, and especially thank you, Chief Kitty. You know, it was kind of a freak thing, I guess, that we had the opportunity to get this dog this fast. I don't think even I expected it to happen that fast. So that was amazing. Chief Kitty, thank you very much. I almost wanna have a clap for you. Yeah, getting this canine in here, we're already seeing results from the one that we have now from ION. So just to get another one in here and get them rolling, it means so much to this city. It's just, it's impossible to state what a big thing it is. And I'm really excited about this COVID relief money. I think we're gonna be talking about it a lot and what we can do with it, and I wanna encourage everybody to give us your ideas and encourage everybody on council to think really hard about this money because we don't get very many opportunities to have a shot at 6.3 million money that, you know, we don't have a plan for. So it's a great opportunity for us to do some things that we would not normally have the opportunity to do. And just to throw an idea out there, what my focus is gonna be for at least a little bit of this money is, you know, we have a chance, one of the things that you can do with this is economic development. And the biggest economic development I can think of for this city that we always talk about, and we have not had a source of money to make it happen, is trying to do a demo on the Waldo and the Parsons Hotel. I mean, those are two pieces of property that if they were developed, I think we could do something serious with those pieces of property. And I don't know when in the future we'll have the money to get that done. You know, here's the opportunity. Maybe it'd be 1.5 million to do both of them. I've heard 1.2 as a guess for the Waldo and Parsons, not nearly as much. But, you know, I really don't wanna be looking at those for another 30, 40 years of my life. I'm tired of those. And I think a lot of Clarksburg is, too. And, you know, that would be such an impact we can make on the city. It's all happening. Welcome back, Jimmy.
And with that, I will recognize our returning vice mayor.
Well, it's truly a blessing to be here this evening. You don't realize when you're healthy and you come and you just take it for granted. But when you have something happen to you, and the COVID is definitely for real. It was a hard 25 days in the hospital, and I appreciate the mayor and the council's prayers and all this, my family and the citizens out there in Clarksburg. I got a lot of calls and texts and cards, and it really helps. When you're in that kind of situation, somebody could bring in a million dollars and it wouldn't help you. But the prayers that came in were really uplifting, and I really appreciate that from the bottom of my heart. And again, I'm happy to be here working with these guys, and I talked to a couple of them, and you know, if you wanna try to take something positive out of a bad situation, and I really am trying to take, be positive in my future endeavors in working with the council. And I truly wanna work with them in a positive manner going forward. And I think, I was unfortunate I missed the budget, but I did try to look in and see how everything was going. I wanna commend Harry and council. I think they did a great job on it. Looks like it was well put together. And a lot of good things are happening for Clarksburg. I wanna commend, we had a nice turnout of candidates. We had 11 people sign up. All good folks, you know. It's gonna be a hard choice for the citizens of Clarksburg out there this time. We do have a nice field, and I'm truly blessed with the people who signed up to run. I don't think that we can go wrong. I think their hearts are in the right place. I think they wanna move Clarksburg forward. And I'm excited for that. So again, I'm blessed to be here, and I thank God every day that I get up and come in and be able to come to this meeting. Thank you, guys, for all your support, council, mayor, city manager. Thank you.
Okay, I'll close it up. First of all, by also welcoming our vice mayor back. I'm really glad to see you open about, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Also, for the almost two years now that I've been mayor, my focus and the focus of this council has been increasing public safety. And so I am ecstatic, as many others are, that we already have our second canine officer, Asta. Two years ago, we had no canine officers, and now we have two. And I think that's a tribute to this council that they've put a focus on public safety. In addition, we've more or less doubled the size of the police department also in that two-year period. So we're really attacking this hard. And some people have talked about the COVID money, for lack of a better way of putting it, that's gonna come our way, the $6.3 million. And so we're having one or more work sessions in the near future. We're gonna sit down and discuss what to do with that money because my goal is that we make smart decisions for the future of Clarksburg that are generational. Things that will make a difference in Clarksburg for people that may not even be born yet and can leave a legacy for our children, our grandchildren, and beyond. And so that's what I really want to do with this money. I don't know what that is yet, but that's my goal. And, you know, a lot of people- And, you know, a lot of people, a lot of people have asked me why, why I'm not running for council again. And so I'll just say it really quickly here. I believe in term limits. I've always been a very strong proponent of them. The term limits, they're actually on the ballot to be approved on June 1st, would limit somebody to having two back-to-back terms, and they would have to leave. And this is my second term, and so I'm going to practice what I preach, lead by example, and, and walk away. But, and, but I'm still here for a little bit, about three and a half more months, and we're gonna do some great things for three and a half more months. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. adjourned.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.